Ready if you are. Okay, good. Good evening. Welcome to the Borough Council. Borough of Ramsey, Mayor and Council, regular session for Wednesday, August 27th, 2025. This meeting is also being conducted telephonically. The dialing number is 425-436-6365, access code 213-563. And of course, the meeting can be viewed on the Ramsey YouTube channel, which can be accessed from the Borough website. Can I please have a roll call?
Mayor Dillon?
Here.
Councilwoman Cusick?
Here.
Councilwoman Gutwetter?
Here.
Councilman Kilman?
Here.
Councilman Papalo?
Here.
Councilwoman Poppy?
Here.
Councilwoman Wood?
Here.
Thank you. We'll have Flash Loop. The class officer will lead us.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of all citizens to have advance notice of and to attend all meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting the public is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, notice of this meeting of the Mayor and Council was published in the Bergen Record and the Suburban News on Wednesday, January 15th, 2025. May we please have approval of minutes?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from July 23rd, 2025.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Are there any comments or changes to the minutes? No? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cusick?
Yes.
Councilman Gutwetter?
Yes.
Councilman Kilman?
Yes.
Councilman Papalo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Poppy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wood?
Yes.
Thank you. Communications.
I'd like to make a motion to accept and file the communications listed on tonight's agenda.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Are there any comments on the communications? Not hearing any. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cusick?
Yes.
Councilman Gutwetter?
Yes.
Councilman Kilman?
Yes.
Councilman Papalo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Poppy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wood?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll open it up to public comment. Anyone wishing to address the governing body, please give your name, spell in the last name and address. Please speak in an audible tone and address your comments to the Chair. There will be a five-minute time limit per speaker unless reduced because of the volume of business on the agenda. Please note, public comment is your time. And respect and fairness to all, there will be no interruptions or questions answered during your time. No time shall be said to anyone else, and no time shall be saved for later use. Any responses may be given during the governing body's comments later in the meeting or as directed by the Chair. The Borough Clerk is the official timekeeper. Anyone want to speak? Okay, is there anyone on the line? First call for public comments on the telephone line. Okay. Second call for public comments on the telephone line. Third and final call for public comments on the telephone line. Anybody in council chambers? Just to let you know, Councilwoman Cusick will give an update on pickleball during her comments, during the council comments section, so she will. But if there's anybody that has any comments or any questions, now's the time. What about it? She'll give her, she'll give an update during her comments? If you've won, if you have a question right now, sure.
No, I don't have a question right now, but I'll do a call.
There's no public comment after she asks, she'll give her report, but of course, you can always speak to her after the meeting. Okay? Okay, please. Hello. Remember, give your name, spell in the last, spell your last name, address. Spell your last name for Ms. Bendian.
Yeah, last name is Fang, and first name is In, 273 Elizabeth Avenue. I know that you guys are not changing the ordinance time. I just feel that maybe you guys can think about it for the weekend, you know, because stop at six o'clock and Sunday stop at four o'clock, you know? It's very sad because the sky is still bright. And I, I wish that the next, that you guys pass the ordinance for September, you guys can think about Sunday, you know, give us a longer hour for pickleball and tennis. Those tennis play also, the police come and call, uh, at four o'clock, the police will come and ask them, of the neighbor, that neighbor complained and complained about, you know, and then police had to come and ask them to stop. But it's, it's daylight saving, it's going to be seven o'clock dark already, you know? So I hope that you guys will consider for the, for Saturday and Sunday.
All right, thank you. We're not introducing the ordinance to do that tonight, but Councilwoman Cusick will give an update.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else?
Andrew Ferretti, F.E.R.R.E.T.T.I., excuse me, 22 Balfour Lane. My question is about grant money and park development. When we use grant money to help develop something like, for instance, when we did the playground over at Finch, we used grant money to do that, correct?
Open space grant, yes.
So that then makes our park public?
It makes it so that other people, it's non-residents can use it, yes.
Okay. And in our state, New York State, anyone? Okay. Now, I know you're going to do more improvements there and, uh, fine, because you're going to do the pickleball over and such and such. My question then would lead to Oak, the Oak Street Courts. Was that done with grant money, what they had at this point?
Yes.
It was? Okay. Is there any point of an expiration that that could become? If we redid it again for, as in, just to pull it out of the air, and it was done with 100% Ramsey money, would it become Ramsey Park exclusively?
I'm not sure. I don't know if there's anything clear cut with the state on that. But I have asked the question to our county representative and have not gotten a response.
That was my question. Is this a forever thing, whether it be Finch or Oak or you pick a park?
I posed the same question and I have not been able to get an answer.
Okay. Do you see where I'm going with this, especially Oak? If this can become a Ramsey facility, then we have more control over what's going on. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay, not seeing anyone. I will close public comment. At this point, what I'm going to do is go out of order for Mr. Bozay. Can I have a motion to go out of order for Mr. Bozay to give his report?
Madam Mayor, make a motion to go out of order for Mr. Bozay?
I second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the reason why we're going out of order is that Mr. Bozay will give his update and he will explain all of the hearings that are open for final consideration and introduction of the ordinances and several of the consent resolutions that have to do with money.
So I apologize upfront for the length of my report, but we have a lot on the agenda tonight, so you'll, I'll need water and you'll be sick of me in a few minutes. First things, first thing is I'll cover ordinances for public hearing and adoption. Ordinance 14-2025 is a multi-purpose bond ordinance. It addresses needed capital improvements in three areas for the Borough. Resurfacing and new lighting for the pickleball and basketball courts at Finch Park for $950,000. This project upgrades the pickleball and basketball courts with a removal of the court surface and a full resurfacing of all of the courts. In addition, the project will replace the existing lighting and install new court lighting for all the courts. Over the past few years, the Borough sought out and received three different grants for this work, which cumulatively total to $312,775, or approximately 33% of the estimated project cost of $950,000. It allocates $3,750,000 to the emergency services communication upgrades. The Borough's communication system infrastructure and radio equipment are all nearing the end of their useful life. Last year, the Borough sought proposals from independent professionals in this specialized field who were not representatives of any of the equipment manufacturers to review our infrastructure and equipment and make recommendations on an upgrade plan. After review of the proposals, the Borough selected VCOM as its consultant, contracted with them in accordance with Resolution 127 of 2024. VCOM issued a report to the Borough with a few options for review and consideration. The Borough has used the VCOM recommendations and further refined the plan for implementation. The, this ordinance funds the capital project covering a number of components. It's for infrastructure equipment to move to the new 700-megahertz system that the state, County of Bergen, and most New Jersey law enforcement agencies have already moved to or will be moving to in the near future as these replace legacy systems. This equipment is planned to be added to a communication monopole in the Borough. New mobile and portable radios to replace the current end-of-life radios for the Ramsey Police Department, the Volunteer Emergency Services, and the Ramsey DPW, and infrastructure equipment at Ramsey Police Department Headquarters to replace the current end-of-life equipment, including the dispatch center and requisite support equipment. It also has a component for the construction of a new garage at the Department of Public Works. This portion of the ordinance is in coordination with the project to build the new Island Avenue Emergency Services Complex. After demolition of the existing Island Avenue Firehouse and during the year-plus of construction, the Borough will need an inside space to store and protect its investment in these, in this life-saving apparatus, the Fire Department Rescue Squad. This new building will be that location during the construction of the new firehouse and then transition to a DPW garage. So the trucks and equipment that are currently stored outside will be moved inside to preserve and extend their useful life to the Borough as well. Ordinance number 15-2025 is a multi-purpose bond ordinance for capital improvements for the Board of Public Works, water and sewer utility in the amount of $2.4 million. This addresses capital improvements in three areas for the Board of Public Works. It's the replacement of the Snyder Avenue Water Main. The Board of Public Works has, over the last number of years, worked on upgrading some remaining old and undersized four-inch water mains in the Borough. This is a continuation of that long-term project with the replacement of the Snyder Avenue's water main. At the same time of the water main upgrade, any needed lead service line replacements on the Borough's portion of the service line will be made in compliance with the state mandate to complete these lead service line upgrades by 2031. It includes a component for Phase Three of the lead service line water service replacements. The Board continues its multi-year project for the lead service line replacements in compliance with the aforementioned state mandate. This is the third phase of the replacements and will include techs fits to identify the composition of any unknown lines as well as replacements of previously identified lead service lines. It also, ordinance includes a proportion for preliminary engineering, design, and permitting services for water treatment systems for PFOS at Darlington, Brookfield, North Central, and Spring Street West. As previously discussed at Mayor and Council meetings, the Environmental Protection Agency has instituted new water quality standards regarding PFOS over the last two years. The Board of Public Works has been actively working to develop water treatment systems, add its supply wells for the PFOS treatment. Ramsey has actually proactively put in treatment systems for PFOS in advance of the EPA legislation at some of our wells and continues this multi-year capital investment plan for the additional treatment systems at the remaining wells. This portion of the ordinance would fund these preliminary pre-construction costs for this next phase of treatment systems anticipated to be put out for bid and construction in 2026. Ordinance 16 of 2025 is an ordinance that amends Ordinance 4 of 2023, providing additional funding of $350,000 for the design and architectural services for the construction of the new Fire Department Rescue Squad OEM Station Complex on Island Avenue. As Council President Kilman has discussed in his updates at the Mayor and Council meetings, this project has been undergoing further review. Through a number of meetings and evaluation of market conditions, it's been determined that material changes to the design and construction drawings needed to be made to stay within the budget parameters initially estimated for the project. These changes will still provide a complex that meets the future needs of these departments, but will ultimately reduce the cost to meet the original parameters of the project. This ordinance amends the original Ordinance 4 of 2023 that provided funding for the design and architectural services to increase the amount to revise the design and construction drawings. Those are the three ordinances for final here, public hearing and final adopt, vote on adoption.
You want to take a break before, and do the, and do the hear, final hearings and then?
If you want, and then I'll do the resolutions.
All right, so to avoid information overload, how about we break up Mr. Bozay's report? So can we have a motion to go back into regular order?
Madam Mayor, make a motion to go back into regular order.
I second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. At this point, we'll have advertised public hearing for final considerations of ordinances. It's Ordinance 14-2025, which is Finch Park Emergency Services Communication and Emergency Services Communications Upgrades.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For Ordinance number 15-2025 for final consideration, bond ordinance to authorize?
14, yeah.
14. What did I say?
The 15.
I see 15.
I got 15.
For 14-2025, bond ordinance to authorize the making of various public improvements in, by, and for the Borough of Ramsey and the County of Bergen, the State of New Jersey, to appropriate the sum of $5,300,000 to pay for the cost thereof and to make a down payment. Two, authorize the insurance of bonds to finance such appropriation and to improve for the insurance of the bond anticipation notes into anticipation, bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds. Having been brought up for public hearing and all persons interested having been given opportunity to be heard, pass final reading by title and that said ordinance be adopted as an ordinance of the Borough of Ramsey and be it further resolved that the Borough Clerk be, and she hereby is, directed to cause a copy of the title of said ordinance to be published in an official newspaper of the Borough in manner provided by law, together with a notice of the date of introduction and adoption of said ordinance.
I'll second.
Thank you. All right. Are there any comments from the council in addition to Mr. Bozay's explanation? Okay, thank you. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on Ordinance 14-2025, which is the funding for Finch Park improvements and Emergency Services Communications Upgrades? Not seeing anyone in chambers? Is there anyone on the line? First call for public comment. Second call for public comment. Third and final call for public comment. Okay, we'll close public comment for this hearing. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilwoman Cusick?
Yes.
Councilman Gutwetter?
Yes.
Councilman Kilman?
Yes.
Councilman Papalo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Poppy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wood?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the public hearing for final consideration of Ordinance 15-2025, which is the ordinance for Board of Public Works, the water main on, water main work on Snyder, lead service line, and the PFOS water treatment facilities.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is the final ordinance number 15-2025. Bond ordinance to authorize the making of various public improvements in, by, and for the water sewer utility of the Borough of Ramsey and the County of Bergen, State of New Jersey, to appropriate the sum of $2,400,000 to pay the cost thereof, to make a down payment, to authorize the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation, and to provide for the issuance of such bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds. Having been brought up for public hearing and all persons interested having been given an opportunity to be heard, pass final reading by title, and that said ordinance be adopted as an ordinance of the Borough of Ramsey and be it further resolved that the Borough Clerk be, and she hereby is, directed to cause a copy of the title of said ordinance to be published in an official newspaper of the Borough in the manner provided by law, together with a notice of the date of introduction and adoption of said ordinance.
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on Ordinance 15-2025? Okay, not seeing anybody in council chambers. Is there anyone on the line that would like to comment on Ordinance 15-2025? Second call for public comments. Third and final call. Not hearing anyone. I will close the public hearing. Will we please have a roll call?
Councilwoman Cusick?
Yes.
Councilman Gutwetter?
Yes.
Councilman Kilman?
Yes.
Councilman Papalo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Poppy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wood?
Yes.
Thank you. Now we'll have intro, the final public hearing for, sorry, the public hearing for final consideration of Ordinance 16-2025, which is the design and architectural services for the new Emergency Services Building.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Final ordinance of number 16-2025, 25. Bond ordinance to amend the title in sections four, five, six, seven, eight, 10, and 11. The bond ordinance, Ordinance number 14-2023, entitled Bond Ordinance to Authorize the Making of Various Public Improvements and the Acquisition of a New Automotive Vehicle, including original apparatus and equipment in, by, and for the Borough of Ramsey and the County of Bergen, State of New Jersey, to appropriate the sum of $2,721,600, to pay the cost thereof, to make a down payment, to authorize the issuance of bonds and to finance such appropriation, and to provide for the issuance of the bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds, adopted on April 26, 2023. Having been brought up for public hearing and all persons interested have been given an opportunity to be heard, pass final reading by title and that said ordinance be adopted as an ordinance of the Borough of Ramsey and be it further resolved that the Borough Clerk be, and she hereby is, directed to cause a copy of the title of said ordinance to be published in an official newspaper of the Borough in the manner provided by law, together with a notice of the date of introduction and adoption of said ordinance.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the public who would like to comment on Ordinance 16-2025 and it's amending a section of this ordinance originally passed in 2023 regarding the design and architectural services for the new Emergency Services Building?
I'll just make one clarifying comment. As I explained in my thing, this is only $350,000 of new money. The rest of the money that was in the title was previously proved for other projects in 2023.
Thank you.
So there's only $350,000 of new funding in this ordinance.
Yes, okay. Is there anyone from the council? All right. Anyone from the public wishing to comment on this ordinance? Ordinance 16-2025. Okay, not seeing anyone in chambers. I'll open it up. Anyone on the line? First call for public comments on Ordinance 16-2025. Second call. Third and final call for comments on 16-2025. Not hearing anyone. I will close the public hearing. May we please have a roll call?
Councilwoman Cusick?
Yes.
Councilman Gutwetter?
Yes.
Councilman Kilman?
Yes.
Councilman Papalo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Poppy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Woods?
Yes.
Thank you. I hereby appoint Matthew Schroeder to the Ramsey Municipal Alliance. And after the consent resolutions, I'll swear you in. Can we please have a motion to go out of order so that Borough Administrator Bozay can cover some of the resolutions?
Can we have a motion to go out of order to do exactly what we just said?
Thank you.
I second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Bozay?
Okay. Resolution 147 just designates the Borough representatives for the Bergen County Community Development Program. This community development program is ultimately federally funded, but, but the county administers it. We've been very successful in obtaining grants through this program for such recent projects as new bathrooms at Borough Hall, also at the Finch Park Multi-Purpose Community Room, VFW Voting Location. Our appointed representatives are myself as the representative and Borough Clerk Bendian as the alter. Resolution 148 adopts a revised plan and service agreement with Lincoln Financial. The Borough provides its employees with an option to contribute to a self-funded deferred compensation plan similar to a private 401K but for plans offered by state or local government entities. It's called a 457 account. The Borough provides no contributions. These are 100% funded by the employee. Our plan is through Lincoln Financial, and this just adopts a revised plan and service agreement for that. Resolution 149 is authorizing a change order for Neta Architects for redesign services for the new Emergency Services Station House project. As I discussed in my comments on the ordinance and Council President Kilman has given his updates at various Mayor and Council meetings, through a number of meetings and evaluation of market conditions, it was been determined that material changes to the design needed to be made to stay within the budget parameters initially estimated. This will do that, and will still provide a complex that meets the future needs of the departments and will ultimately reduce the cost to meet these original parameters. The resolution, this resolution approves the change order in Neta's contract of $343,460 with the Borough for the design and architectural services needed to revise the design and the construction drawings reflecting the changes to the project. Resolution 150 awards a contract to CRT Contracting for roof repairs. These are for flat roof areas of Borough Hall, the Police Headquarters, the Department of Public Works Garage, and the West Side Firehouse. This contract is awarded under Bergen County Cooperative Bid. Funding was already in place for this in Ordinance Fab of 2024. Resolution 151, as noted in the discussion of the Communications Ordinance, VCOM has assisted the Borough with developing a plan for upgrading our communication system. They've completed that work. This awards a second contract to VCOM to provide the Borough with professional telecommunications consulting and frequency engineering to support our move to the New Jersey State Radio System. These services will be provided consistent with the direction of the Borough on a time and material basis. Resolutions 152 and 153 regard the Borough audit from 2024, which was completed by our independent orders, Garberini Company. They found no significant efficiencies, no material weaknesses, nor instances of noncompliance related to the Borough's financial statements. The Borough did have a couple audit comments and recommendations, as noted in the audit, which is published on the website, and a corrective action plan has been adopted and put in place. Resolution 154 authorizes the insertion of a special item of revenue into the Board of Public Works 2025 budget. When the Borough receives grants or other revenue items subsequent to the adoption of the budget, that will be offsetting budget expenditures. We may do a resolution to add that revenue into the current budget year and have a direct offsetting line item. In this case, the Board of Works has participated in the PFOS litigation against 3M and other companies for their role in contributing to PFOS compounds in the water supply across the country and in the state of New Jersey. The Board has received its first payment in the 3M settlement in the amount of $234,191.96. This revenue will be utilized to help mitigate the cost of appropriation lines for the design and implementation of PFOS water treatment programs. Resolution 155 authorizes the Borough to enter into a license agreement with Rockland Electric. In conjunction with the emergency communication system upgrade, the Borough plans to run fiber optic communication line from the tower behind the DPW building to the Ramsey Police Headquarters building. The line will run above ground on the Rockland Electric utility poles. This resolution authorizes the Borough to enter into the agreement with Rockland for providing the service and access path. Resolution 156 authorizes McKay Brothers to proceed with the project to construct a communication tower at the Borough's property on North Central Avenue. As detailed in the resolution, the Borough owns the property on North Central Avenue, which is block 139, lot 5, and is located in Mawa. The Board of Public Works, after a public bid, entered into a lease agreement with McKay Brothers, whereby McKay would construct a communications tower on the property for its communication needs in accordance with the bid, and the Ramsey Water Department of Borough would be co-locators on the tower for their communication needs. The project was the subject of an advertised public hearing before the Ramsey Planning Board on February 4th. The hearing entailed testimony of expert witnesses on the needs and benefits of this project as a capital expenditure of the Borough, as well as public comment and questions to the experts from the public as well as the Mawa Township Attorney. Upon completion of the public hearing, Planning Board unanimously voted to recommend the project back to the Mayor and Council for using capital funds as a capital expenditure under Section 31 of the Municipal Land Use Law. Under the public bid and lease, it is McKay Brothers' responsibility to construct the tower at its expense. This resolution authorizes McKay Brothers to proceed with the permits and approvals necessary to construct the tower. I'd like to note that both Mayor Dillon and I have each reached out to our counterparts in Mawa numerous times over the last six months, excluding as recently as this week to meet and discuss their issues, if they have any, with the tower, and our requests to meet have been ignored. And that would conclude my comments on the resolutions.
Thank you. All right. Do you have a motion to go back into regular order?
Madam Mayor, we make a motion to go back into regular order.
I second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Consent resolutions?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Be it resolved that Resolution one forty-four twenty twenty-five through and including one fifty-six twenty twenty-five, having been considered by the governing body of the Borough of Ramsey be and are hereby passed through. For special permits, Ramsey High School Band and Guard Parents Association requests permission to go door-to-door for annual Hopi sale fundraiser September twenty-sixth through October twelfth of twenty twenty-five, with deliveries on October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. Ramsey Public Education Foundation requests permission to hold their annual sprint for our schools, five K family fund run on Saturday, May ninth, twenty twenty-six, beginning at eight thirty a.m. Couple block party requests, the ten, Quinn Brook Court Street requesting a block party on Saturday, October fourth, twenty twenty-five, from two to ten p.m. and one seventeen dash one twenty-four, Deer Terre Nord, requesting a block party on Saturday, September sixth, twenty twenty-five, from two to ten p.m.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Are there any comments on the consent resolutions? Not hearing any. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cusick?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gutwetter?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kilman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Papalo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Poppy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Woods?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, you're up.
Aye.
Aye. Matthew Schroder.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will seriously. Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Of the officer.
Of the officer.
And do municipal lines.
And do municipal lines.
Close the ducts of my door.
Close the ducts of my door.
And be further solemnly swear.
And be further solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the House of Lords.
That I will uphold truth.
That I will uphold allegiance.
And that I will build true faith and allegiance.
And I will bear. Faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I just really want to thank Matt for stepping up. Shawna Ward Chellup, as you know, was the head of R and RMA for many, many years, and she had decided to step down last year, and she stayed on because we couldn't find anybody else. I reached out to Dr. Mattio for some suggestions. Matt met with us and his wife, Erin's wife, you know, my husband's interested. We were actually, we met, but there in one week, we met with Matt the following week, and we were so bowled over by his enthusiasm, and it's a really smart idea and have a few minutes with AI, because nobody wants to take minutes at meetings. So I really want to thank you for stepping up.
My pleasure.
It's a vital service that RMA provides, and we need really strong leadership. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're up now for committee and liaison reports. Finance Administration, Councilwoman Gutwetter.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I will start off by thanking and congratulating Matthew Schroder, who just met a couple seconds ago, for his appointment to Ramsey Municipal Alliance, and thank him for stepping up and the service in the borough. My report for tonight, for the library board, the twenty twenty-five summer reading program concluded and was quite successful. I'll have more information on this once the library board meets in September. The library made a presentation to the residents of the Woodlands on services the library can offer to residents at the end of July. The library is looking into a team room renovation, updating the space and the furniture to make it more conducive to the team group. Patrons can purchase many Ramsey library branded merchandise such as t-shirts, mugs, and tote bags, and residents can also check the library website for full programming. Recreation Commission's fall rec soccer registration is open for play beginning in September. Winter basketball registration should be available through team staff in early September. The Halloween parade will be again coordinated with the fire department. Men's and women's softball days are wrapping up during this month. Summer camp at Finch Park was quite successful this past summer, ran from the end of June to the end of July. Registration is available before the forty-seventh, Jack McKeon Memorial Ramsey Run on Saturday, September twentieth, twenty twenty-five. Sponsors for this run are welcome also. For more information, check out the Recreation Commission's website. The Ramsey Farmers Market is open from nine a.m. to two p.m. through November. There will be an Apple Festival on September twenty-first, sponsored by the Women's Club of Ramsey. There will be a Home and Garden Show sponsored by the Ramsey Chamber of Commerce on October fifth, and a Touch Truck event will be held on October twenty-sixth, sponsored by the Ramsey Juniors. Come out and check out all the great vendors that are in attendance at the market each and every Sunday, as well as the craft for children and music, and a nonprofit organization is usually in attendance. That's my report for this evening.
Thank you. Public Safety, Councilwoman Kilman?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. First, congratulations to Matthew Schroder on his appointment to the Ramsey Municipal Alliance. Thank you for your service on that. I have two brief reports. One concerns, one comes from the Ramsey Police Department, and just the Ramsey Police Department will temporarily be designating Prospect Street as a one-way road between South Island Avenue and Canterbury Drive, starting at seven a.m. on Sunday, August thirty-first. The traffic will be allowed to flow only eastbound towards South Franklin Turnpike. This is being done in conjunction with the Ramsey Board of Education to ensure student safety at the high school, and I want to add that this temporary change resulted because of the extended timeline for the high school construction off of Main Street, as outlined specifically in Superintendent Mattio's letter to high school parents. This will remain in effect until further notice. The Ramsey Police Department appreciates everyone's caution and cooperation in this public safety necessity. As Mr. Vosay had mentioned, and I always give this report to make sure that we kept in the forefront of our minds, the design team continues to make strong progress on the Ramsey Emergency Services Complex project. They're developing a revised comprehensive concept that remains within set budget parameters despite ongoing inflation and rising construction costs. Once the design phase is completed, it will be presented to the full mayor and council, as well as to the public. Following an internal review of the proposed plan and bid package, the borough will submit the materials to the State Office of the Controller for approval before proceeding to the bidding phase. At this time, there is no estimated timeline for when these happen.
Thank you. Building planning and zoning, Councilwoman Woods?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I hope everyone's enjoying this summer. I'm looking forward to seeing everyone at Ramsey Day. Congratulations to Matthew Schroder on his appointment to the Ramsey Municipal Alliance. Thanks for stepping up and for your service. And also congratulations to Connor Bearman on achieving his Eagle Scout Award, which will be official in November. The Design Review Board met August twenty-sixth, yesterday, and approved two applications. The third application needed revisions. Mary Ann Lupo, Board Secretary, has completed a draft of the new application and new procedures for the applicant. The application package is thorough and requires the applicant to sign off on the ordinance if they understand they cannot make changes to their signage without approval. She has also coordinated enforcement by communicating any infractions of the revised sign ordinance brought by the board. The next Design Review Board meeting is Tuesday, September twenty-third. The senior trustees met August fourteenth. They are preparing for their senior picnic next Wednesday, September third. This past Friday, they hosted a karaoke event, and it was very successful. Sixty people attended. The next meeting will be September eleventh. Zoning Board of Adjustment meeting for August twentieth was canceled because there were no complete applications. The next meeting will be September seventeenth. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Congratulations. Thanks, Matthew, for getting this support for the Ramsey Municipal Alliance. My report tonight will be enough regarding our planning board, tree commission, and forthforth reports. For the Ramsey Planning Board, it met on nineteenth of August, and there were five waiver applications with borough. There was one hearing, one public hearing for development on Island Road. The hearing will continue to September sixteenth. Tonight, for our review and approval from the planning ordinance, is an amendment to the ordinance for front porch, amending Borough Chapter thirty-four. Our next planning board meeting is September of September. For our shade tree commission, meeting on August twenty-first was canceled. The next meeting is eighteen of September. Ramsey has a tree city for thirty years in a row now. This is a wonderful accomplishment. The commission has started planning within twenty twenty-six and twenty-two seasons. For our Board of Public Works, that last met on the eighteenth, August twenty-five, the next meeting is fifteenth, September twenty twenty-five. So Borough Administrator Vosay has made comments regarding PFAS and the lead service lines in ordinance, in his comments for ordinance in P dash twenty twenty-five. I do talk about PFAS mitigation at our meetings. Our borough's projects for PFAS have been submitted for low interest loan considerations from the IBank. I wanted to add that for our consideration of tenants. And the IBank has reviewed and requested some additional information, which is to be compiled by our consulting personnel. Lead service line replacement, as Borough Administrator Vosay also commented, our PPW continues planning and implementing education measures, live with NJPPE's lead service line replacement mandate, and that requires all lead service lines in the water system are replaced by the year twenty thirty-one. Ordinance eighteen dash twenty twenty-five, which will be introduced this evening, has provisions for the mandatory replacement of lead water service lines. Speaking about investment for infrastructure, another notable project for our borough, which was introduced tonight through funding, is the initiative to replace existing old water mains, so the four-inch water line on Snyder Avenue will get upgraded to a new eight-inch water main. I want to thank PPW for handling the white pop pad water main remediation and the Fairfax Drive repair work, and these borough funds. If you're able to do so, please remove clean the debris away from storm water mains, because properly maintaining storm drains prevent flooding, protect our local roads, and mitigate damage to homes. And it also ensures that runoff, stormwater runoff, flowing into ponds and streets and streetlights. As requested by Madam Mayor, and finally, the pickleball update. Ramsey Recreation Director Ty Bersey and I met with representatives who attended our council meeting last month regarding the pickleball in tennis courts. We met on August fifteenth in the late afternoon, and I thanked them for their time. We met at Finch and discussed the potential for additional capacity at Finch Park. We discussed plans to use acoustic simulation modeling for the East Oak Street courts prior to any decisions. On eighteenth of August, Ken and I, Mr. Ty Bersey and I, met with Carl Schmitz, Chief Technical Officer at USA Pickleball via a teams meeting. Along with the current changes in operating hours, the information which was discussed with Mr. Schmitz, and the preliminary modeling, decibel and sound modeling, will help to inform for our noise mitigation strategies, which may include sound barriers and equipment modifications. The borough has already planted buffers and limited the hours. Mr. Schmitz noted that he is in support of our current mitigation strategies. The operating times at the courts will remain as is. Please note that Finch is open from eight a.m. to eight p.m., Monday through Sunday. Madam Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you. Publicing Government Relations, Councilwoman Poppy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I would like to thank Matthew Schroder for taking on the position of Chair of the Ramsey Municipal Alliance. I'm sure he's going to do a wonderful job, and I look forward to meeting him at their next meeting on the twenty-second of September. The Ramsey Municipal Alliance will also be discussing at that time an upcoming parent forum to be held at the end of October, and they will be at Ramsey Day on September sixth, as will Ramsey Stigma Free. Gary Bott from the Ramsey Municipal Hall would send a message that he would like to thank the pool commission, the council, borough employees, and first responders for the support all summer long. We're very grateful for his service to the borough and his time that he spends directing that pool. He does a fabulous job, as do the lifeguards and the pool commission. The pool commission will meet the third Wednesday of September at seven thirty, and every third Wednesday of the month thereafter. The Ramsey Chamber of Commerce is getting ready for Ramsey Day on September sixth. I would better run and come out and support our local businesses and organizations. It's a great day with kicking off with the parade, and we have a lot of people that come out to it and do great things, games, giveaways, and so forth. So please come out and join us on September sixth. Thank you.
Thank you. Health Education Social Services, Councilman Papalo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We want to congratulate Matthew on his appointment to Ramsey Municipal Alliance, and thank you for his service. I'll begin with Ramziers for everyone. We hosted our pool party and barbecue event. We had too many people, way too many people.
That's a good thing.
Extremely well attended. I think it was over a hundred and fifty family members that participated in the event, and we'll have to see what we have to do next year, because if it gets any bigger than that, it's a little taxing on us to go.
Build another pool?
But it was a great, great event. We had a great time, much appreciated by the family members and individuals that went. So thank you to everyone that helped out. Next up for Rife will be Challenger Soccer in September. Not sure about the date, but probably middle of September, that'll kick off and go. And we are planning a Halloween party for October that will be in St. Paul's, tentatively right now for October twenty-fourth, but we will see if that stays with that. On Environmental, we met on August twelfth. Three major things going on with them, a beautification project at Corfido Park, where they're planting donated plants on September thirteenth at that park. Styrofoam as well, will have a collection and drop-off on September thirteenth from nine a.m. to eleven, and they are working on a plan for the grant allocation of funds that we've seen for signs. We're dealing with the safety issues first of like most of the bicycle paths, right? So some of those things that we're doing for that. So those are the three major things for environmental. Board of Ed met last night, eight twenty-six, and I know most of you know all the issues that are going on at the high school, and that was the topic of discussion for about an hour. I will highlight that parking lot situation is due to be okay. We have multiple locations on Main Street, St. John's. There was a donation, twenty spots on Franklin Turnpike, and the Board of Ed lot that they have. So they have about a hundred and twenty-six spots for the teachers, which we should cover that. I know President Kilman talked about Prospect One Way eastbound, that'll be the drop-off lane for that, and of course, I think there will be a communication later this week from Dr. Mattio on the president's on where we stand for that. And that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Lan, quick question. What was the park that you're on September thirteenth that's being?
Corfido Park. That's the one off of South Central.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. For my comments, this past Friday, we were able to attend the Fab Friday at the Pool, and it was absolutely fabulous, and it's amazing to me how many people were at the pool at nine o'clock on a Friday night, including all the kids, who were having an absolutely wonderful time. So it's great to see that that facility is really being well-used and enjoyed by many, many people. Just to let everybody know, as mentioned previously, Borough Administrator Vosay, the Ramsey Police Department and I have been Department and I have been working with Superintendent Mattio to help accommodate the needs of the Ramsey High School while the construction is ongoing, including making tennis courts available for the JV team. And we've also, you know, Prospect is becoming a one-way temporarily, and that is at the request of Dr. Mattio and Dr. Thumb. We'll see how it goes. Hopefully, it's successful. If not, we will definitely reevaluate it. I'd like to thank Matt Schroeder for stepping up to lead the Ramsey Municipal Alliance. I have great expectations for him, and I look, as Glenn mentioned, for the Rife Pool Party, that was quite the success. I couldn't believe how many people were there. It was unbelievable. We, we started running out of food, or certain food. It was great. So it was a really nice, very well event. And that's all I have. Borough Administrator.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Final portion of my report. I will comment on the ordinances that are up for introduction tonight. Ordinance 17 of 2025 amends the Borough Code regarding porches. This ornament, ordinance amendment was recommended by the Ramsey Board of Adjustment and Planning Board in residential districts R1, R2, and R3. This ordinance amends the code to provide a six-foot porch encroachment allowance to the front yard set back for covered steps or covered porches. This allowance would only be provided where these covered porches are not enclosed nor have screen shades or other coverings installed. This recommendation provides relief to residents and time and money by eliminating the need to apply for variance and have a public hearing before the Board of Adjustment for variance as that historically has been granted. Resolution 18 on the agenda tonight establishes Section 17-6 in the Borough Code entitled Lead Water Service Line Replacement. This ordinance was recommended by the Ramsey Board of Public Works. As Councilwoman Cusick liaisons on to the BPW, has commented on at the mayor and council meetings over the last couple of years, the state of New Jersey has mandated that any lead or galvanized water supply lines be replaced by the year 2031. This includes both the portion of the supply line from the water main to the curb stop valve, which is owned by the borough, as well as the remaining portion of the water service line from the curb stop valve to the water meter, which is owned by the property owner. This ordinance delineates the responsibility for the cost of mandated replacement to the borough for the portion it owns and to the property owner for the portion they own. The ordinance provides for $750 payment to property owners who replace their galvanized or lead water service line before the later of 270 days of the adoption of this ordinance or 180 days of when the property owner was first notified that they had a line requiring a replacement. This ordinance provides some mitigation to the replacement cost to the property owners for their portion of the water line they own and maintain. The ordinance details what is needed for the $750 payment from the Board of Public Works, including the certification from the Borough Committee Inspector that the lead service line was removed and replaced. Ordinance 19 of 2025 amends Chapter 7 of the Borough Code regarding parking on private property. This ordinance amends the code to the code was requested by Don Bosco High School through its Director of Public Safety and consultation with the Ramsey Police Department. This amendment is very basic in that it simply states that vehicles must be parked in designated parking spaces. Many times in events, vehicles are parked everywhere, eliminating access to emergency vehicles should they be needed. This will allow for enforcement of vehicles being parked only in line spaces. Ordinance 2025 amends Chapter 3 of the Borough Code regarding times for noise prevention. This ordinance amends two sections of the Noise Prevention Section of the Borough Code, extending the prohibited hours for construction or repair as well as music. For construction or repair, Section 3-8.2, subsection A8, this changes the limit of work on all days to end at 6:00 p.m., where it currently is allowed to work until 8:00 p.m. on all days except Sunday. For the music section, which is 3-8.2A1, it reduces the existing nighttime hour time limit from 11:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. on all evenings other than Friday and Saturday. And for music, it also pushes back the allowed time in the morning from the current 7:00 a.m. to the 8:00 a.m. Monday through Friday and 9:00 a.m. on Saturdays. And then Ordinance 21, 2025, amends Chapter 10 of the Borough Code regarding retirement insurance benefits. This ordinance amends Section 10-13, subsection A, to further clarify years of service required to be eligible for retirement insurance benefits and the required employee contribution requirements. Most of the borough employees are covered under a collective bargaining agreement on employment paycheck, which detail these provisions in them. This ordinance covers only those non-union, non-contracted employees. The ordinance was last amended in 2010 and requires clarification by providing a minimum number of years of service to the borough to be eligible, as well as specifying the contributions the employee would be responsible for. This amendment confirms a minimum service time of 25 years in the New Jersey pension system, with at least 15 of those years being served with the borough for eligibility, and sets the employee contribution rate at those that are in the collectively bargained union agreements of 54.5% of what amounts of employee contributions. That would conclude my comments for tonight.
Thank you. Very comprehensive. Appreciate it.
Well, one meeting a month can get a lot of the president's meetings.
Good point. Borough Attorney.
Nothing. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Borough Clerk.
Nothing. Thank you.
Wonderful. And we will move on to introduction of ordinances. Ordinance 17, 2025.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Introduction of Ordinance 17-2025. Be it resolved that an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending the code of the Borough of Ramsey, Bergen County, New Jersey, and more particularly, Chapter 34, to establish Section 34 dot 4 dot 29, thereof entitled Porches. Pass the first reading by title, and that said ordinance be further considered for final passage and adoption at a regular meeting of the mayor and council, to be held on the 10th day of September 2025, 7:00 p.m. prevailing time, or as soon after as the matter can be reached, at the municipal building in said borough. And be it further resolved that the borough clerk be, and she hereby is, instructed to publish in an official newspaper of the borough in the manner provided by law, a copy of said ordinance, together with notice of introduction thereof, and notice when the same will be considered for final passage and adoption.
Do we have a second?
This is Councilwoman Cusick. I second.
Thank you. Any comments on this?
This is really a wonderful ordinance, because it's, it's so much better for homeowners than having to waste their time and money coming before the board for something that is very de minimis in the effects of zoning. So we're happy to do this.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cusick.
Yes.
Councilman Gutwetter.
Yes.
Councilman Kilman.
Yes.
Councilman Papalo.
Yes.
Councilwoman Poppy.
Yes.
Councilwoman Woods.
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 18, 2025.
Ordinance 18, 2025, be it resolved that an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending the code of the Borough of Ramsey, Bergen County, New Jersey, and more specifically, Chapter 17 thereof, so as to establish Section 17-6 entitled Lead Water Service Line Replacement. Pass the first reading by title, and that said ordinance be further considered for final passage and adoption at a regular meeting of the mayor and council, to be held on the 10th day of September 2025, 7:00 p.m. prevailing time, or as soon after as the matter can be reached, at the municipal building in said borough, and be it further resolved that the borough clerk be, and she hereby is, instructed to publish in an official newspaper of the borough in the manner provided by law, a copy of said ordinance, together with notice of introduction thereof, and notice when the same will be considered for final passage and adoption.
I second it, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Any comments on this ordinance?
Madam Mayor, this is a compliance item, and it's good for the borough residents who have galvanized lead service line. They've been contacted as much as practical by our BPW, and this is also a positive for our borough residents.
Well, hopefully, it will encourage more people to replace their lots.
That's it, Madam Mayor, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cusick.
Yes.
Councilman Gutwetter.
Yes.
Councilman Kilman.
Yes.
Councilman Papalo.
Yes.
Councilwoman Poppy.
Yes.
Councilwoman Woods.
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 19, 2025.
I'd like to introduce Ordinance 19, 2025. Be it resolved that an ordinance entitled, and ordinance amending Chapter 7 of the Code of the Borough of Ramsey, Bergen County, New Jersey, and more specifically, Section 7-42, thereof entitled Regulation for the Movement and the Parking of Traffic on All Other Private Property. Pass the first reading by title, and that said ordinance be further considered for final passage and adoption at a regular meeting of the mayor and council, to be held on the 10th day of September 2025 at 7:00 o'clock p.m. prevailing time, or as soon after as the matter can be reached, at the municipal building in said borough, and be it further resolved that the borough clerk be, and she hereby is, instructed to publish in an official newspaper of the borough in the manner provided by law, a copy of said ordinance, together with notice of introduction thereof, and notice when the same will be considered for final passage and adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments on this ordinance?
I think Borough Administrator Vose went through this in good detail. So this is just for the parking of, of traffic on other private property as per request of Don Bosco.
Perfect. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cusick.
Yes.
Councilman Gutwetter.
Yes.
Councilman Kilman.
Yes.
Councilman Papalo.
Yes.
Councilwoman Poppy.
Yes.
Councilwoman Woods.
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 20, 2025.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Be it resolved that an ordinance, 2025, entitled, and an ordinance amending Chapter 3 of the Code of the Borough of Ramsey, Bergen County, New Jersey, and more specifically, Section 3-8, thereof entitled Noise Prevention. Pass the first reading by title, and that said ordinance be further considered for final passage and adoption at a regular meeting of the mayor and council, to be held on the 10th day of September 2025 at 7:00 p.m. prevailing time, or as soon after as the matter can be reached, at the municipal building in said borough. And be it further resolved that the borough clerk be, and she hereby is, instructed to publish an official newspaper of the borough, in an official newspaper of the borough in the manner provided by law, a copy of said ordinance, together with a notice of introduction thereof, and notice when the same will be considered for final passage and adoption.
Madam Mayor, I second.
Thank you. Any comments on this?
Just briefly, regular concerns from residents always seems to deal with noise of any kind, and this is, as a result of listening to residents, we've adjusted times reasonably. So this is what this ordinance is about.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cusick.
Yes.
Councilman Gutwetter.
Yes.
Councilman Kilman.
Yes.
Councilman Papalo.
Yes.
Councilwoman Poppy.
Yes.
Councilwoman Woods.
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 21, 2025.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Introduction of Ordinance 21, 2025. Be it resolved that an ordinance entitled, and ordinance amending Chapter 10 of the Code of the Borough of Ramsey, Bergen County, New Jersey, and more specifically, Section 10-13, thereof entitled Recovery Insurance Benefits, subsection A, so as to clarify years of service and employee outreach requirements, pass the first reading by title, and that said ordinance be considered for final passage and adoption at a regular meeting of the mayor and council, to be held on the 10th day of September 2025 at 7:00 p.m. prevailing time, or as soon after as the matter can be reached, at the municipal building in said borough, and be it further resolved that the borough clerk be, and she hereby is, instructed to publish in an official newspaper of the borough in the manner provided by law, a copy of said ordinance, together with notice of introduction thereof, and notice when the same will be considered for final passage and adoption.
I'll second that.
Somebody's phone going off.
Yes.
Okay. Yes, who?
We have a second.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any comments in addition to Mr. Vose's? Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cusick.
Yes.
Councilman Gutwetter.
Yes.
Councilman Kilman.
Yes.
Councilman Papalo.
Yes.
Councilwoman Poppy.
Yes.
Councilwoman Woods.
Yes.
Thank you. Not having unfinished business or any new business, please have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Call in favor.
Aye.
Thank you.
Number five.
No invoices.
Like that.